Uh, call the meeting to order. Uh, Maya, would you mind serving as secretary for this meeting?
Sure.
Give me one more second.
Finish logging in.
Yeah, I, you know, I just jump in as a guest. Because it is. It is.
Oh, you didn't know that. Where? Ask you next month?
Yeah. In two weeks and a couple hours. We'll feel.
Well, yeah, but.
Well, my, our, our stuff will be, our stuff will be largely concluded in our office, so. All right, uh, with, we are called to order at six thirty-two. Will trustee Ganguly serving as secretary please take the role?
Trustee Rogers? Here. Trustee, uh, Foss?
Here.
Trustee Fruth?
Here.
Um, trustee, uh, Chatapatti is not here. Trustee Fairfax is absent. Trustee.
Bloom.
Bloom is potentially going to be joining us later via Zoom, but I do not.
I do not. She was, I, I just checked the attendance and she is not.
Okay.
Listed there, so. All right, a quorum is present. Uh, the first order of business then, next order, I said, the next order of business is our approval of minutes from our meeting in September. Does anyone have any corrections or comments? Uh, hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, the minutes are approved. Uh, there was one public comment, uh, that was submitted and it was sent back on October ninth. This is from Roy Plotnik. "I am a thirty-plus-year resident of South Oak Park and have always valued May's library for its convenient location, beauty, and its friendly staff. One of the best things about visiting May's or any library is the ability to browse. Recently, I went to look over travel books with the hope of finding something to plan a possible vacation. To my distress, I learned that all travel books were now at the May Library. Not long ago, I was also told that all of the CDs have been moved to May. The impression this gives is that the branches and their patrons are being given short shrift. I communically catered these concerns to the library staff using the webpage. The response in brief was unsatisfactory. To quote some of it, "We adopt a holistic approach to curating our collection, strategically placing materials to best serve the community guided by relevant metrics. Since reopening, our branches have experienced robust usage with patrons actively engaging with our materials. Our branches are designed to offer a curated, accessible selection that aligns with the diverse interests of the general community. With this objective in mind, we made the decision to relocate the travel books from May's to the expansive travel book collection at May. We recognize that this adjustment means patrons won't find these books at the shelves at May's. However, they can still browse the travel section in person at May's or utilize the computers at May's to explore the travel selection and place holds for convenient pickup." Close quote. While I do not expect the branches to carry the variety of titles that the May Library does, it is not unreasonable for them to carry at least some titles of each of the areas that an independent library would have. The same argument that is made about the travel books could be applied to any subject area, be it history, biography, or science. Given that the branches have robust usage, why not cater to the interests of their patrons? Finally, I would also appreciate the library reconsidering the policy from a few years back of no longer showing genre fiction together by type. For those of us who are fans of a genre, this has also damaged the joy of browsing." That was the only comment I was received.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, sure. Going on to trustee, trustee comments and calendar. Um, the item for B is December third, Chicago Marriott Oak Brook, I believe that's the ILA.
Yes, I just realized that I left part of that off, so apologies for.
That's okay.
Not catching my attention, but that is the, um, ILA trustee.
Uh, we agree.
Later this later lunch, it used to be breakfast during the winter, so I know Christine has signed up to attend, so it was kind of a good idea.
I will, if, I will, I will email you to let you know that I do plan to attend as well.
Okay, I will send you one.
Thank you.
And then the November meeting is just.
Okay. Any other trustee comments? Okay, going on to then item five interim co-directors report.
Nothing at this time.
Okay. We have our staff reports.
Uh, start with the strategic priorities report, that's in your packet we will start. Mm-hmm. So just highlighting a few things. Mm-hmm. Um, under maintaining library facilities, um, in an effort to kind of plan ahead, um, and take a look at the systems in special collections in terms of environment. Uh, we invited the Moon and Butkus Associates, um, who is a mechanical engineering firm in critical infrastructure, heating and cooling, um, to visit special collections. Um, just to talk about some improvement in terms of the climate control in the rooms. Um, three of them came out, they met with library staff on site, um, they performed a space and equipment study. Um, once that is done, um, we'll have a constructive narrative, um, some designs and probable cost. Um, the reason why we invited them to come out is, uh, the systems in the special collections room are as old as the building. Um, and we really need a system that is able to maintain both temperature and humidity. Um, and some of the older equipment is having difficulty doing that, so hopefully, um, with this study, we'll have a better idea of kind of what's needed in the space. Um, a staff spotlight, we wanted to, uh, send our thanks and appreciation, um, to material handling supervisor Katie Edgersdorf, um, who has helped execute many projects since her promotion. Uh, last year, over the last year, um, a mini tasking project, she helped plan, carry out the shifting of over twenty-five hundred shelves of books on the third floor. And initiated a reorganization of the sorting room to improve efficiency. Um, she's very detail-oriented, um, and does very well for materials handling, so we're very appreciative of that. Um, a little bit more about our third-floor collection pullouts, um, so the project is completed, uh, for the third-floor pullouts. Project focused on analyzing how the community engages with the collection. And we redesigned the pullouts to reflect a more inclusive or presented, uh, representation of current publishing landscape. It took about a year of very hard work, um, but moving forward, they will continue to refine these areas as new materials are added.
Okay. And then in the learning section, I wanted to highlight expanding opportunities for bilingual technology instruction. Uh, it was a collaborative effort between our creative studio staff and our community engagement team, um, to offer bilingual technology classes at the library in September through Connected Nation. Connected Nation is a national nonprofit that has worked with broadband related technology space for more than twenty years. Uh, and with the support of AT&T offers free digital workshops in both English and Spanish. Um, so across two days, we offered four classes at the May Library, mobile device basics, Zoom conference basics, internet safety, and email basics. So this is a really wonderful effort by our teams. Also in September, the library hosted two events focused on transgender community support. On September seventh, we hosted author and speaker Ben Green at the May Library. Uh, this was again a collaborative effort with the local chapter of PFLAG, uh, children's services, and the adult services teams. Um, during the event, Ben talked about his latest book, My Child Is Trans Now What? A joy-centered approach to support along with other supportive topics and resources. Later in the month, the library offered a virtual event entitled Transgender 101 with vocal speaker consultant and community leader Nick Kokrenzil. Um, the program was organized by adult services librarian Jabez Patterson and staff learning and wellbeing specialist Ginger Slade. Um, as this was kind of, uh, an event that served dual purposes, uh, as it was recorded, it was for the public but also recorded for staff training. And, uh, we just got some really positive feedback, which is in the, in the notes there. And then at the end of the month, um, our middle and high school services team, um, took, uh, chartered a bus on a Saturday. Did happen to be home time, so we have less attendance, um, but it's the Chicago Football Classic. And this is an annual celebration of HBCU pride that features a football game and other events at Soldier Field. Um, there was like a battle of the bands and, uh, uh, you know, some of the sororities and fraternities come. This comprehensive day included education, culture, and community. Um, notably, none of our students had even ever been to Soldier Field before or attended a football game. So this was a really exciting event, um, you can see some of the comments about their feedback from it, so it was really great. And this program in particular was, um, sponsored by the funds of the library, so that's how we were able to fund them getting down there. This is the second year we've done it and the response has been great.
That's wonderful, uh, I, I saw the, um, Morehouse, I believe it was, um, marching band in Daily Plaza the, the week before, uh, I can't remember if it was Thursday or Fri- you know, during that week, the, before the game. I was wondering what they were doing, you know, in, you know, down in Chicago for the thing, but it was, uh, they were just fantastic there. You know, an HBCU marching band is something to behold. If you've, if you've never had a chance to see one, I would highly recommend ever, if you ever have the opportunity, it is really, it, it's so much fun, there's so much joy in it. But anyway, so yeah, but this, that, that was a real treat to read about that, um.
Are you ready questions about?
Well, you know, it's interesting that you mentioned that some of these kids have never been to Soldier Field.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, it, just for the cost of a bus, they, they get downtown for a sign, and that's happened to me as well with, with other entities. You kind of go, really, if you've never been downtown?
Mm-hmm. Um. We've been down to the four U statistics, so this is something new. We switched our quarterly model, I think you guys remember, so this is the second, our second quarterly dashboard in here. So this is Q1 through Q3, um, and there are some information there, um, as you can tell, I feel like, um, so if the change was above five percent, there's a green plus. If it was below, like a negative six, if it was below negative five percent, then there was a minus sign. If it was under five percent, it's like a, a wave, which is kind of neutral. Um, some things to note, we saw an uptick in website users in September, um, that was the biggest month so far. Um, online resources had its strongest border peaking in August, I don't know, will you, if you want to provide some additional context about that?
Yes, so, um, that was because, uh, access to the Washington Post, the New York Times, it's the other one. Um, but we did a huge promotion during library card signup month, so we really pushed out the e-sources, and so we saw that, that bump, um, which is excellent. Plus, I would imagine with everything happening nationally, people are really reading newspapers.
Mm-hmm. I, I have seen a couple of, uh, comments in, uh, some local Facebook groups over the last month or so of people, uh, commenting, uh, about the newspaper access via the library. They're like, why was I paying when I could see, when I could get it through the library? They're like, oh my God, so.
Excellent.
It was, I, I, you know, two or three, in two or three different groups, so there wasn't, you know, in a threat. It was a couple of independent things, so like, the message was getting out there as well.
I don't know if there's anything, anybody else, you know, who sees the attention, any like clarification?
I just like this new way of showing it so much. It's really, uh, easy on my eyes, yeah.
Yes.
The visual aspect, and, um, really, we have a really wonderful data consultant that we work with who is always amazing with her, we do visualize data.
And.
Yeah, we have more computers, right? Is that why we have such a bump? It seems like we have a, like, all the computer use, was it because we got the extra space? Or is that not significant, seven thousand feels significant, I mean, it's not.
Year over year for the quarter, yeah.
Twenty-four percent, yeah, that's.
That's a lot of computer use, yeah. That is a pretty big, pretty big bump.
You know, it'd be one thing if it was, I would expect it from like summer to fall because schools back in, but from like the same quarter to the same quarter, that is a good question. I didn't, I didn't catch that one.
I, you know, um, I do, I do not believe that we've gotten any additional computers, but maybe, you know, more people are accessing them at the library, you know. I do believe, and I'm not sure when, it predates me that they pulled them out of this room and kind of put them along the windows. And we kind of have more, instead of going into a computer room, um, you can just sit by the windows, you have your own individual space. And maybe it makes it more inviting for someone to use a computer.
More comfortable, more comfortable, yeah.
That's wonderful. Who thought that up?
I don't know. I was. I will say, I love how the computers are placed in the children's section, because my three kids are kind of vastly different. So it's like, if one of them wants me to read to them, the older one might be able to use the computer, and I can kind of keep, like, an adult eye, making sure he's not.
Doing anything he's supposed to, he's not supposed to.
If he were to sign, he's supposed to.
That's all for us.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we, we have the HR report. I think there's staff, some staff leaving, some staff changing. Okay. Then we can go into our financial reports. We have. This is for seventy-five percent of the year. Anyone have any questions? I thought I had one, but now that I'm rereading it again, and it's like I didn't write it down, but as I'm rereading it again, I can't even get a prompt for what I was thinking about so clearly. It was, it was critical. Yeah, I can't remember what it was, even as I'm looking at it over. Okay. Um, then we will go into our resolution on dispersments, which the reconciliation begins on page nineteen. And continues through page fifty. Are there any questions on the dispersment journal? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ted, is there a second?
Second.
By Maya? Any questions or discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. It is approved. Thank you, everyone. Um, additional reports, I go.
Um, we didn't meet this weekend, uh, I go with something else. I, what is the way I'm gonna say this? We, uh, had a spirited discussion and we are going to, we're gonna try to get some group norms and communication stuff happening, because, um, we wanted to have an event in October and it didn't happen. Um, so, yeah, we had a interesting meeting this weekend.
Okay. I think that was very generous.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I think I get a sense of it. Um, COG did not meet since our last meeting.
I don't know, it's getting.
Uh, if, if, if memory serves, I had to go over my email, I think, I'm not even kidding, I think it was like, you know, November sixth. The day after the lecture, which, um, I'm gonna suggest that you move. Planet Green?
Uh, I believe that, I think it's November fourteenth, that there's going to be a sustainability, um, event in the veterans room here. And I, I think it's the fourteenth, it was the twelfth, if you remember. But, um, I had hoped that Christine might be able to be available as a resource for that, because I think that these are going to be people from all of the communities around Oak Park coming together to talk about, um, green issues. And it would just be nice to have some library preparation, I have time, but I couldn't make a commitment for staff that would mean that. I'd like to just offer that as a possibility.
Okay, okay. What's the date?
I believe the fourteenth.
November fourteenth?
Yes.
All right.
And we have a couple more, um, local students who are going to be going to Baku, Azerbaijan in November to the International Climate Conference.
Excuse me.
And we've had students before, um, I don't know if you know Manolo, remember his last name?
I'm, I'm familiar.
Yeah, yeah, he was, he went to Sharm El Sheikh, and, I mean, it's just, it's just remarkable that this is happening. And of course, Baku is a very strange place to have a climate summit.
But, wow, so, and so is, so is, uh, the last place they had, it was, you know, the East was meant to, it was, where, where was the previous one? It was.
It was in Sharm El Sheikh, yeah, Egypt.
Yeah.
So.
So. Yes. All right. Moving on to, um, executive director search. Ted and Lee are part of the committee, do either of you want to provide any updates?
As an overview, um, I think that I'm really, really very pleased with how we're working with Koya partners. And, uh, we had a search committee meeting this past Friday, where we were talking about, um, issues of bias and such. And it was so beautifully handled by Amber, I mean, she just really supports something. Um, and, uh, I looked at the larger firm, and it's, it's huge, because there's Koya, and there's diverse departments, and then above that. And when you look at the staff, um, they have deep, deep staff opportunities.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm looking forward to, to a, a, a good work with them, and of course, we've gotten documents that Koya staff and department, we're gonna be talking about.
Yeah, the, the postings are live, um, and, you know, maintaining, you know, confidentiality, but there are, you know, there has been, uh, some, you know, a number of people who have expressed interests from across the country. Um, so we are getting, uh, national interests of, um, of, from really qualified libraries and professionals who are, um, you know, talking, talking to Koya about this position, so, uh, it's an initial round, um, it has just gone live, so. But the, the early feedback, I, I feel, is, is, is rather positive in my mind, so.
And Amber made the point that, um, any inquiries that we get should be filtered through Koya so that things aren't landing on your desk.
Yes.
And then the whole idea of confidentiality is also stressed.
Yes. They want to maintain that, and, and create that sense of trust with the candidates is, 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 is key. Um, and related to that, um, before I get, before I move on to the next item, uh, Maya, do you, or Christine, I know you, I didn't know, Christine, I don't know how much of that meeting you were on.
I was on for only the implicit bias, I had to get off right at whatever, the one hour mark, so. I didn't actually hear that update.
I had, I had a meeting, so I wasn't able to.
Yeah.
Because it was, it was Friday, right?
Yeah. So, I think it was a little bit later in the meeting after you both left, that Amber shared her own story. Oh, yeah, yeah.
I was there for the whole implicit bias, and then I missed, like, the, I wanted to hear the updates, but.
Yeah.
But it was a good training, they did a great job, and I, it's one of those things where once you like start working with a group, you see their name everywhere, but I'm just, like, they just hired for MICA challenge, and like, they, they've hired for a lot of really incredible folks in Chicagoland area, and that's very nice to hear, so.
All right. With that, um, the committee did, uh, there, there is, um, a fee for posting the position on ALA. And the committee voted to incur that cost. Um, and so the, that is a recommendation to the whole board, um, that committee vote, and so at this point, uh, we can, uh, I guess to take up that recommendation. The vote of the committee stands as a motion, so is there a second?
It's like half a second. I'm just like curious.
Um, so online posting with resume access, thirty-day job posting is two hundred and forty-nine dollars. Um, you do get a member price, enhanced posting, um, a thirty-day posting, the job stays near the top of the list on the job board, and the job is highlighted, and the job board is three hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Can we just, I'm suggesting, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, um, and the maximum exposure of four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And this is, this is monthly, is it not?
For, for thirty days, yeah.
I think the question for us was, is this built into Koya's contract to promote it, we are paying them?
I, I seem to remember that there is an, an item in the contract that talks about outside fees and such, that those are on.
We do pay them a thousand dollars a month additionally to what, that's, I don't know what we.
Yeah, and I.
What their discretionary, what the fee is, but we do get a bill for a thousand dollars a month that we pay a month.
Okay.
So I, we were kind of thinking that this would be a Koya cost, not a what, like if it was built into their contract recruiting fees. So I think we were just looking for some clarification, because we took the time to post, we get one free ALA posting, which we used. Um, that spoils this for you, but ALA is the one that.
Okay. It's, it's worth making a question, but I think that I'd like this meeting to know that the board would like to go forward with an ALA posting.
Okay. So, um, with the mo- with a motion, is there a motion to approve an ALA posting? And I will coordinate with, and I will communicate with, um, you know, Lubin Maharima as the committee chair, and communicate with Koya about the, the, you know, who is responsible for that cost, you know, as it appear, you know, reviewing the contract.
For ALA though, right?
Yeah. Yeah, for ALA. So that would be, uh, the motion to approve, uh, pursuing ALA posting, uh, you know, with Maharima, and I communicate, you know, coordinating with Koya as to, um, covering, you know, what, what the cost would be.
And it would be between two hundred and four hundred.
Five hundred.
Oh, ninety-nine.
Yes.
Yeah, did you say which one you wanted, or did you not just?
Um, I think I would like to leave it up to staff.
Which would, no, I think, I think this, I think that's, that's our call to make. Um, I think, I, the range of two hundred and five hundred, I think, for us to determine which is the best, I think, the, you know, Koya as the search professionals will, will have a perspective, but, you know, we need to determine that. So.
So we need a motion, is there?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion.
Is there a second? What second?
Wait, I think we have the first motion as well, okay.
No, because we, we, we specified.
Got it, okay.
We, 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 we specified a little bit more detail than I thought what the.
It's all getting confused.
I, it was, I, I am Otter Day, I don't know if Otter's on, and I'm sure Otter would be telling me, I am not.
I think it was the.
So I see, I know. Um, okay, so the motion is to host to the ALA for a fee to be determined in conjunction with Koya.
Yes.
Okay. Um. Injection with Koya, moved by, by trustee Rogers, seconded by Foss.
But now are we giving like free rein for like, like, how many thirty-day, I guess, costs are we talking about?
That's a good question.
Where are the, what are we, what have we just got?
We haven't voted yet.
Okay.
It's been, it's been moved and then now we're in discussion and I think that's a fair question. Do?
How would anyone feel if we were to amend the motion? To say that a motion to post ALA for a fee to be determined in conjunction with Quoia up to and including two thousand dollars?
Well, I think that we're, we're going to Quoia first to say, aren't, isn't this part of what we're paying you to do? And then the second question to Quoia would be, can, can, is it efficient to do this for thirty days or sixty days?
Yeah, or like doesn't make sense. I like what Maya said though, because you could, I could see the benefit of starting at premium and then kind of going like to a lower tier.
Yeah, exactly. Or starting at premium and then going to a lower tier later. Sorry, no, or starting at the lower tier and then going to premium. If we don't, oh my gosh. You, you can use it if you, you know, since there's no close date for the position, you can use it as a, we're not getting.
Yeah.
Yeah, for bonus dollar.
Yeah.
And Quoia wants to close this as soon as possible revenue. So they're going to be possibly interested in taking like a posting.
Yeah, it's to their benefit to, that a, a search is concluded successfully and relatively quickly. So there's been an amendment made to the motion that it would be for, do we want to say like a number of months as opposed to a dollar amount? Or do we just want to say?
What I like, what I, why I suggested to give you a, a look into my dark and crazy brain is if you were to say like a thousand dollars or two thousand or one, one, one thousand five hundred, that would give the option of, you know, three months premium or, you know, how many months not, like a longer period not premium. And so we could, it gives a little bit of strategy and wiggle room based on the expertise. So I mean, I'm not saying two thousand is the ideal amount. We could say one thousand because that could be two months premium or, you know, four, four months? At a non-premium rate? My math is not so good tonight. Good thing you're having me do the secretary stuff and not the treasurer stuff.
Yeah, I think if Quoia doesn't incur the cost, I think a thousand's probably enough. It's like, we should have the search closed and ask for the work during that and stuff.
Yeah, okay. So for, so the amendment will be for a thousand dollars.
Perfect. All right, and so now we need, I guess you need to agree to.
Trustee Rogers agree with the amendment?
Oh yeah, that's my amendment, I agree, yes.
Okay, so trustee Rogers move.
Accept, accept the amendment, yeah. Hearing no, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say nay. All right, that is approved. I will circle with Madarima and we'll review the agreement with Quoia and talk to Amber and Tricia. Then you can go into new business, the library budget. Tonight's the night.
Tonight is the night.
It is the night. So yeah, October is traditionally the month where we would present draft three, which you have in front of you in the board packet and adopt the levy resolution for the overall budget and tax levy for 2025. Draft two of the budget, oh sorry, draft three of the budget that's in front of you is a copy of draft two with two changes. Those two changes are both in the revenue section. We learned a little bit more about the corporate property replacement tax and how much we can anticipate to receive in 2025. We had to decrease those projections a little bit. And because we had, because we had a balanced budget, we defined that eighteen, those decreased by eighteen thousand dollars. We need to find eighteen thousand dollars either an increase in revenue or a decrease in our eighteen thousand in expenses. So what we decided to do was increase the Illinois recapital grant revenue. We historically have not budgeted for that line. As sometimes depending on how the state's functioning, we may or may not receive that money or receive a timeline. But we have been, and that, and that amount is like over eighty, eighty thousand, I believe, eighty-one thousand. So we decided to put that eighteen, eighteen thousand dollars offset and went ahead and budgeted there to balance the budget. Those are the two changes. Still a three point two percent tax levy increase, property tax levy increase. And all the expense lines remain the same. Are there any questions for Billy or staff?
I did want to point out the moment we're speaking to Quoia and doing the job description for the executive director. In an initial draft that we had, we kept on talking about financial abdomen, financial abdomen, financial abdomen. And we were counseled by Quoia to, in looking at the executive director, not to have that person think that the executive director will have sole responsibility for the finances and that we have a very competent financial team here now. And I think that Quoia was happy to hear that. And so we changed the job description to kind of downplay the fact that you're just going to be the financial officer if you're the executive director. So I thought that there would be something you'd like to know.
Yeah, no, I, well, thank you. No, thank you. And also that speaks to, I think, the work that the team has also done. Linda Barnett, our manager of accounting and finance, I mean, she's the one who started up. Her, she's coming up on her three year anniversary. And yeah, I don't know where we'd be today without her, so I appreciate those.
So Tricia said she's really happy to be able to speak to the candidates and say, don't, don't sweat this, oh, Park does a pretty good job, so.
And also, you know, that, sometimes that's also, it's not, it's not necessarily also a sign of, about staff acumen as well as, could also be a sign of various financial issues of relating to other things. Because there was a time in the late eighties, early nineties when the library had to take a loan out from the village to, to keep things going. It wasn't that bad of a financial situation. And so, like, there, there's a variety of reasons to, to do that. We are nowhere near that position anymore, thanks to many years of hard work by staff and board members from before us. But I think this is a very solid budget, given, given our conditions and our situations. I think this is a good place to be, all things considered. Any other questions, Maya or Christina?
No, I think you, you've already done the hard work. Like, this is kind of the same draft ultimately, so I, I feel pretty good about it. I feel strange that we don't have all of our colleagues here today, but.
So about that, I was actually, this is more not for you, but for him, a technical bit about how we want to deal with the resolution, because this is a formal letter. And I am not the acting secretary, but I'm, but I would, I'm not the secretary. I'm kind of putting in her seed, so would she still sign it or would it, so we're voting something for her to sign who is absent.
Theoretically, she could vote no and still have to.
And still have to sign it, that's true.
Yeah.
Okay.
Signing protest.
It is, it is legitimate question. It is, it is a good, good thing to consider, but it is, yeah. Because as long as we document it proper.
What nobody wants is to have to redo everything and then be a month late because of the need to redo it.
So this would require two separate votes. One is, unless, yeah, because there's one, there's a resolution for setting the financial requirements and there's a resolution setting. The page fifty-six and fifty-seven are separate.
It's, it's one resolution.
Oh, is it one resolution?
It's one resolution, yeah. The, the second page is just more of a confirming the first page.
Okay, all right, I thought, in my mind, it was always, it was always two separate votes. One for the, one for the budget document and one for the thing, but?
The, the overall financial requirements document covers both the budget, the overall operating budget and the tax levy that you're telling the village to levy on behalf.
All right, are there any other questions not, that's not directed at the lawyer? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ed and Christina. This does need to be a roll call vote. So this is a yea or nay, one by one.
All right, trustee Foss.
Of me, yes.
Trustee Rogers, yes. Trustee Ganguly, yes. Trustee Fuss.
Yes.
All right.
And we have three absent trustees, so that resolution passes. We have adopted our budget and levy for 2025. Thank you, everyone.
Yes, thank you. Matt, just to clarify what the conversation was earlier, it's okay to leave Suzanne's name on here for signature? She can come in at a different time and give the signature.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
She was very under the weather today.
Because otherwise I was going to have to sneak out now, update this and then bring it back from.
For some privacy, should I?
Yeah.
Correct, yes.
So then the next thing is our twenty twenty-five scheduled building closings. We have our list here.
Yep, so everything is pretty much the same. So there's two things that we're looking to approve today, tonight. It's the twenty twenty-five scheduled building closings and the twenty twenty-four scheduled modified building closings. We typically have a staff development day, the first Friday of December, which is, this is page fifty-nine, I believe. And last year, before I arrived, about twenty people were out because it's the week after Thanksgiving. So you're in close quarters with your family and in traveling and people were sick. And so, and also it's December, people are busy. So we have modified that and added it to twenty twenty-five. And you can see that here is on Friday, January thirty-first. That's our staff learning and development day. Everything else is the exact same with one additional addition, which is Thursday, July third, who will be asking to close the buildings at five P M. Oftentimes, fireworks take place and festivities on the third of July. And so having folks walk into line, and this is in line with some of our other, you know, closings before a holiday. We close the building at five, as you can see, so.
That seems perfectly reasonable.
I don't know if there's any questions about the dates in twenty twenty-five.
There's no.
I think, like, will you post it the same way? Because I think we were trying to move away from like the religious holiday. So will you just say like December twenty-fifth closed?
Closed, yeah. There's actually a question when I got hired here, because I just saw like a black box and it just says closed.
Yeah, we had a.
There was a long discussion.
Yes. Sorry, I missed it.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Then this will be published in.
On our website.
On our website and some, some other places to let like Swan or local social know.
I feel like the third is probably pretty slow at that time of night anyway, right? Before holiday and everything, yeah.
Yeah, and like people are popping off their own, you know, fireworks locally, I would rather feel, I would feel better that no one's driving out and getting a bottle of rocket at their car.
Yeah, our, our experience, our experience this year was we were open on Wednesday, July third till nine o'clock. And there were almost hurricanes in here, staff report. And like, why are we open at nine o'clock on, on July third?
Yeah, that's a fair, that's a fair point. So with that, is there a motion to approve twenty twenty-five?
Seconded.
So moved and seconded and further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That is approved. We have the amended twenty twenty-four. So this, this new schedule will have, because we did vote to close on December sixth, we should, it is proper that we vote to remain open on December sixth for normal operations. So is there a motion to approve the revised twenty twenty-four schedule?
So moved.
Is there a second? Seconded by Christina. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Twenty twenty-four is approved. Thank you. We we did discuss last month moving the December meeting from the twenty-fourth to the seventeenth. The goal of this meeting at this time would be for board development to review trainings, some other concepts. Should an opportunity, you know, arise in the, in the process of the search where we are in a position to perhaps conduct interviews, we will then also have something we have already blocked off on our calendars and not have to find a scramble for an availability. And we can, of course, table the staff, the board development to another meeting. But I like the idea of us having something on the calendar for one of, whichever way things go for us in December. Is there a motion to move the December meeting from the twenty-fourth to the seventeenth?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. We are moving December.
December seventh.
December seventh, I moved, yes.
Thank you.
It's the same.
I know, I know, I know.
And I did send out a survey monkey to everyone. I'm pretty sure Christina responded, I think she was the first one.
I think I never did.
That's okay, only two people have, and I was not one of them. So I sent it out and I still haven't responded. So I will, I will send it out again. So we have some time to look over, so we have some time to look over the topics that people are interested in covering. Should we have a chance for development in December to coordinate a source for that particular topic? So I'll just send that out this week for, for people to review. With that being said, our la, our last next item is our computer internet use policy.
Yes. So in your packet, you're going to find the memo to the new policy, a copy of the current policy and the new policy. So we've already passed the computer internet use policy for staff. This is for the public. The, the last time we took a look at this was in two thousand eighteen. So there has been significant advancements in technology since then. As with everything, we're very aware of network security. And so this policy does play a part in that. So some of the new things you're going to see are, of course, the reflected updates in technology, security and a new one, SIPA requirements. So basically, what we've done is we've added more language about user responsibility and violations of use. Bearing in mind that all of the computers in the library connect to our network and as a part of network security, we need to let the public as well and staff know that, that they need to be safe. And we have to secure our network. Also, you know, the rise in, in personal data getting stolen, we want to remind the public about protecting their personal data as they use computers. So if you take a look at the new policy.
Starting on page sixty-four, I believe.
Yes. So we go through generally the purpose of a computer internet use policy, the validity of information and then a list of responsible use. and then a list of responsible use. Some of the things that we included, of course, we remind people of time limits, giving out personal information over the internet and be sure to log out of all accounts and lock the station before leaving a computer. There is new language that talks about SIPA, so that is the Children's Internet Protection Act and its requirements that are listed here. As part of this, we are currently installing a new firewall for our network. That firewall allows us to customize what sites, certainly computers in the library can access. Right now, currently, we are only planning on that access being on the children's computers on the first floor. It, it is a type of library filter, but what I want to explain is when people think of a internet filter, you think of something that is blocking certain keywords. So if you go on and you type in breast cancer, you expect certain sites to be blocked because of the terminology. That is not what this is. Our new firewall allows us to prohibit certain URLs. There are sites on the internet that hackers use routinely to gather information. And so this allows us the customization of that to block those particular URLs. As I said, right now, currently, in the children's department, and I think one computer at Mays and one at Dole will have this filtered access. Patrons can of course go up to the desk and request that access be opened up. And we will certainly do that for whatever their research purposes are. And the violations of use, some new language, along with legal compliance, violation of license agreement. We are a library, we do need to pay attention to things like copyright. We of course still highlight misuse of library technology, harassment, and then of course prohibited downloads because as we all know, if you download the wrong thing, that can affect your network. And unfortunately, there are public libraries who've gotten hacked the last couple of years and, and our Seattle, I believe, was hacked in May and they are still coming back online from that. So this is something that the IT department and I feel very strongly about for this. Do you have any questions on that?
Okay, two questions. One, I'm assuming that as we did this use policy, we were looking at library best practices of other entities, so and the legal things, all of that that's been done.
Yes, and Hansel Link has looked over this and signed off on it.
And the second question is, how much, in looking at the filter, how much do we rely upon best practices as opposed to our individualizing at Oak Park?
So, you know, of course we are aware of what other public libraries are doing, but, you know, we're all very mindful of Oak Park is a unique community and we always tailor whatever we do to fit our community.
And these, and the software packages customizable based off?
It is.
It's not, it's not a?
No, we, we, it will block what we tell it to block. And it will, you know, as of right now, the computers on the second floor, third floor, those are completely unfiltered. If there is someone in the children's department that feels like they would prefer to use one of those computers, they are of course welcome to do so.
The violations of use, this is maybe being too nitpicky, I will apologize. But if you look at all users, shall refrain from following activities, you, the descriptions are a mixture of verbs, nouns, and in some cases verbs and nouns. And I would just ask that it be standardized so that it reads smoother.
So you're saying that under the all users?
Yeah, so it's, so it's, so bullet point one was sharing or distributing. Bullet point two, harassment, use of the internet for, you, do you get what I'm saying? It is so minor, it is incredibly nitpicky, but it's like, that's, that's a Scrivener's error. Don't give me that look.
No, no, it's fine.
It's a, it's a, that's a legitimate issue.
Well, I think, okay, may I, may I, may I say, would, you be comfortable with this as the policy and allow for the staff to
Yeah, just do a grammar check.
Pract, practice and, and implementation?
Yes.
Do that, okay.
Yeah, my only, my, my movement was, was to, to check the grammar. And I am moving that the policy, in fact, I will make this motion that this policy be accepted with a check of grammar and.
Consistency.
And consistency. Let me read that down.
I'm just curious, like, is this like the specified, like what people should refrain from? Are these things that come up regularly? Is it like, yeah, yeah. And does, do we, like, I guess the teeth in this is that we can then say, you no longer have the right to the computers, but does that happen a lot? Or is that, is it more of just like a conversation, don't do that? Or it just depends on the situation?
I think it depends on the situation.
I think it depends on the situation. And like a lot of libraries, some that I've worked with, people get hit with these waters saying like, someone is using a library and they illegally streamed or downloaded a movie and you couldn't be viable, but you don't know because of the legal structure of their privacy, you don't know who was on the computer on Tuesday on that day. And so, you know, but these, you know, we are, ask people to not do that. It is hard, I mean, I would say we're going to want more, a lot of run for behavioral issues.
Yeah.
Um.
That's not, I feel like some of these are like easier to track and some are just like, please don't do it.
Yeah.
And that might be.
But, and that's okay, that we're asking them. I guess I'm just wondering if there's like, how we're checking, but.
And so when you log onto a public computer, this policy comes up, then you have to check off on it.
Yeah, I understand, that's right.
So that's, yeah, what you do, we're up there, so. Thank you, that's, that is, that's helpful question. We do have a motion, is there a second?
Seconded.
There's a second.
Seconded by Ted. Are there any further discussions at this point? I think on the whole, this is a very strong policy and I do appreciate the work that was put into it. All those in favor of approving this policy, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those of. It, it always happens at the worst moment.
Yeah.
Those opposed say nay, is approved. Thank you, everyone. We do have a, an update on a personnel matter that would require closed session. So.
So can I just confirm, what is the date for the December meeting?
The seventeenth.
No, it's already on my calendar, it's the seventeenth.
I think as we talked about it.
Yeah, I saw it on my calendar too, that's what I was confused.
And so I was like, was it always the seventeenth?
I think it was originally the twenty fourth, but we.
I don't know, I think we changed it. We like talked about it, but we didn't vote, I thought.
Yeah, that's what happened. And then.
Okay. I also just emailed Vanessa while we were waiting here and asked her to change cog.
Did we make sure it's not like not that day?
Well, we got that.
Yeah, I'm, and, and tired of her.
Tired of her, yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that was actually the date, but it was the day.
They, they emailed and it was the sixth, and they popped one from the host, and we have to be happy to vote.
Yeah. Matt, Matt, okay, is there a motion to go enter closed session for the, for the, to discuss matters of staff personnel?
Moved by Eagle.
Seconded.
And this will take a roll out of votes.
Okay, trustee Fuss.
Yes.
Trustee Rogers.
Yep.
Trustee Ganguly agrees. Oh, yes.